I want to call to order the Hingham School Committee meeting of November 21st, 2016, at 7:30 PM. First item on our agenda is approval of minutes.
I will make a motion that we approve the minutes of the November 7th, 2016, school committee meeting.
Second, okay. Any comments? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, number three, questions and comments. Audience comments are always welcome as agenda items are discussed. The school committee has set aside 15 minutes on this agenda to enable members of the audience to raise questions and make comments on any matter of general concern that is not on the agenda. Individual speakers shall be limited to three minutes. Speakers are reminded that the meeting is being televised and are asked to respect the privacy rights of others. Comments against any individual are not allowed by Policy 3.7.5. Anything from the audience? Diane, we're gonna do yours under communications, if that's okay? Yep. So, number four, superintendent's report.
I want to call your attention to a number of things. Where's Brad? Brad, are you gonna talk about the Quiz Bowl?
No.
No, okay. I never want to steal Brad's thunder, but we were informed today that our team has qualified again. The high school quiz team, Quiz Bowl team, has qualified again for the eighth year. We think we are the only high schools qualified for all eight years. And so, in terms of the qualification, there was an exam kind of activity, and the range of scores in that for qualification were from a low of 260 to a high of 955, and the Hingham High School score was 905. So, that was certainly on the upper end. Other schools qualifying are Acton Boxborough, the Advanced Math and Science Academy, Belmont High School, Bromfield School, Brookline High School, Chelmsford, Dover Sherburne, Hingham, Lexington, Needham, Newton North, North Andover, North Quincy, Sacred Heart, and Kingston, Somerville, and Thayer. So, congratulations to those students. I also would call your attention to a number of things that are in the high school newsletter, which is part of your packet. I'm trying to find mine. I'm not seeing it. In any event, there is information there about AP scores. Ninety-nine of our high school students from the class that graduated in June are received AP honors, and those are all listed in that newsletter, so do take the time to read that. There are AP scores with honor, with distinction, and with four or five different categories, an international diploma, and so on, but that's very good news. With respect to that newsletter also, there's a reminder in it that at the December 5th school committee meeting, we will be looking at the annual high school report, the high school report on placement and scores, such as AP scores, SAT 1, SAT 2. That's coming up at the next meeting, but there's a reminder in there that also on that night, Paula will be presenting the outcome of the committee that was formed last fall, early in the fall, to look at GPA and come up with a new proposal for a reading. Carol has been on that committee, and so that is scheduled for December 5th. We did get a couple of calls recently about when people would know about that, and they were reminded it was in the newsletter. I also want to mention that I've had a number of comments over the weekend in particular, and over the last week, about the various Veterans Day activities that took place across the district. Of course, our high school band participated in the actual ceremony here on Friday, the 11th, but our elementary schools have events. Some of those were on the day before Veterans Day, and at least one was last Monday, and really positive comments in the community from people who attended those. So, congratulations to the students and the adults who made those things work. Also, I want to mention the impact training that was for a group of our high school kids, and I had hoped I could find the -- a photo, and I can. So, we had seven of our high school students who participated in impact training, and impact training provides kids with good skills to avoid becoming victims in threatening situations. I was there, Liza was there, actually, Haye was there, and a number of school committee went to that graduation ceremony. It was very moving. The students had an opportunity to practice and to demonstrate the skills that they had learned, and then they got their, quote, "graduation certificates," and it was a very, very good day. And I actually learned some things that we all can do to make ourselves less vulnerable in a challenging situation. So, that's the good news for today.
Great, thank you. Yeah, the impact event was very moving to experience a different group of kids. We don't normally get to see them in action, and they did a great job. Number five, communications. Communications received by the superintendent.
Yes, I received the report, a monthly report, that I've asked now to get every month, because this was the first time I had seen one, from the post-secondary planning center at the high school. And so, it just summarized the activities for the month. You have a copy of it in your packet, and the highlights of that are -- well, they're not in here. But let me see if I can find it on this.
It's the last one in the folder.
Yeah. So, in terms of actual activities involving people, there were five individual student appointments that were made and completed, eight parent appointments. This role does have some hours early in the morning and in the evening, so parents can make appointments and come in and work with post-secondary planning center counselor. After-school workshops attended, 39. College visits, 67, and that doesn't mean that she went on all of those college visits, but there were 67 kids who reported college visits. And then, the college visit, folks that come to the school, 129 students. So, a lot of things are going on. Kinds of activities include proofreading of college essays, refining a college list, potential applications with students, mock interviews, time to practice, overview of a college admissions timeline, comment application workshops that are available to students who are submitting applications online, and meeting with parents of juniors on a college search and testing advice, and getting some individual advice. So, I think it's a useful report to give a better sense of what that person does, what that office does. Kathy Savery is the name of the person, and I would remind the audience that Kathy is a fully licensed counselor, college counselor, who has a different role from that of the other five counselors and counseling directors that are there at the high school, and it allows individual students and their parents to get some individual support in various aspects of the process. So, we're happy about that.
I'll just add, she also has been sitting in on the GPA committee and really has had great insight to share with us.
She has a much closer contact than most of our counselors with knowing individuals at the different colleges, and she, of course, sits in on all of the folks who come to meet with students, so she's invaluable. Yes, thanks for mentioning that.
And I'm sure as the months go on, the activity will increase.
Oh, yes.
So, we're very fortunate to have her services. Okay, 5.2, student communications. Brad Patterson, we haven't seen you in a while, so welcome back.
Yeah, I believe the last two weeks, two times ago was my own soccer game, and then the last time was the girls' soccer. And after their win, I believe it was two weeks ago, last Saturday, playing against Arlington in Lynn City, they won 2-1 at the end of the first overtime. And so, that was their third consecutive championship run over the past three years. And also, over the weekend, there was other Hingham-based events, starting last Thursday, and also on Friday and Saturday, "Rock of Ages" was performed at Hingham High School. And also, on Saturday was the Holiday Fair at Hingham High School, which showcased local Hingham vendors and merchandise from clubs and teams, classes and teams from the Hingham High School. And today was the first day of Spirit Week, which explains my shirt, since it was USA Day. Tomorrow will be Formal Day, and this Wednesday for the pep rally is Hingham Run White Day. And speaking of the pep rally, which will be on a half-day, and that is leading up to the Thanksgiving Day football game, which will be at home this year, and I believe it's against Situate, as it is every year, and that will be starting at 10:00 AM. Also, with the end of girls' soccer comes the end of most of the fall sports, excluding football. And so, tonight was the winter sports meeting at the high school, which I believe started 40 minutes ago. And also coming up this Saturday will be the annual Sean Ryan Memorial Flag Football Tournament in honor of HHS student Sean Ryan. Any questions or comments?
Just, you know, what did you talk about your success, also varsity JV and freshman in the boys' soccer? You guys did pretty good.
I'll start with the freshman team. I believe they had a 900, or I guess it's .900 season this year, so majority of wins. The JV team had only two losses on the year, and after being placed 12th, the varsity team went all the way to the semifinals to play against Nauset, which was the number-one-ranked team, who was 20-0-1, and had 105 goals, 4-0 against, and it was a great game. All of the Cape Cod newspapers claimed that Hingham should have won the game, but in the end, sad end to the season, but wouldn't have been any better of a game.
That's great. That's great. One other thing, Turkey Truck, the rest is already, right, 7:30? Great event. That's great. Well, congratulations to the girls' soccer team. They're amazing, three in a row, incredible. So, we're very proud of our Harbor women. So, thank you for your report.
Thanks, Brad.
Thank you.
Okay. Other communications. The CPAC, which is Special Education Parents Advisory Committee, co-chair Diane Denapoli asked to provide us with a brief report this evening.
Thank you. I'm gonna give you the handouts after, because being a former teacher, if I hand it out, I'm worried you might not have full focus.
Diane, would you be more comfortable over here where you can put your papers down?
Sure, that's fine. Good evening. My name is Diane Denapoli. I am the co-chair of the Hingham Special Education Parent Advisory Council, or CPAC. I would like to thank you for allowing me to speak tonight on behalf of the nearly 600 families in Hingham who have a child on an IEP or 504. I would also like to thank my fellow board members, co-chair Nate Rand, treasurer Paige Rand, who is not here, I believe she's at home, and our exceptional secretary and subcommittee liaison, Katie Goggan. As most of you are aware, on November 9th, CPAC held an open business meeting. Due to parents' concerns, a vast amount of the agenda was dedicated to listening to parents' frustrations, concerns, and frankly despair in respect to the Hingham education, special education services. This was a highly emotional meeting, as parents who may not have ever spoken out publicly about their concerns felt empowered to do so that night. Providing a platform for parents to address their concerns to the school committee and school administration is the primary mandate of the CPAC. I want to thank my fellow board members, parents, school administration, and school committee members who attended and participated in the meeting. CPAC made a motion on November 9th asking the Special Ed Subcommittee, led by Dr. Ed Schreier, to consider the following motion. Quote, "CPAC recommends that the Special Education Subcommittee of the school committee reactivate and engage a group of parents, teachers, administrators, and town officials, too. One, spearhead continuous quality and improvements and implement best practices. Two, promote transparency. Three, ensure effective use of taxpayer dollars." Dr. Schreier committed to calling a SPED Subcommittee meeting as soon as possible to discuss the motion with the other members of the Subcommittee, Kay Prashma and Carlos Da Silva. I expect to hear when that meeting will occur later tonight, and look forward to working with this group to implement positive change in the Hingham public schools. Based on a parent-only meeting CPAC held on November 16th, three subcommittees were formed to address the above-mentioned concerns. The vision statement of those subcommittees will be handed out for your review and will be available on the CPAC Facebook site shortly. The last month has been a remarkable time to be one of the leaders of the Hingham CPAC. Hingham is a wonderful town, and a large part of what makes Hingham a beacon for so many families is the strength and the performance results of the Hingham public schools. As a parent of a child with special needs, I can attest to the fact it can be challenging, almost unbearable, to think about your child's future in a world that sometimes does not seem motivated to care for its most vulnerable citizens. I challenge us all in this room tonight to resist leaning out of fear or leaning too much on past assumptions and work in the spirit of compromise, commitment, and compassion. The time is now. The leaders who can drive this necessary change are here, and our collective will can create a town and school system that is second to none in respect to the special needs community. I would like to leave us with the words of Helen Keller. Alone, we can do so little; together, we can do so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone?
Liza, this seems like a perfect segue, if I may, just for a moment.
Ready?
The three members of the Special Education Subcommittee attended the meeting that Diane alluded to. We've been asked to address the resolution that was passed, which was mentioned a moment ago. The Special Ed Subcommittee will, in fact, hold a posted meeting with an agenda on Wednesday, November 30th, at 7:00 PM. I'm hesitant to use this conference room, because I'm not sure that there's enough room. So, my sense is, we'll try to use the same room that we did the other night, but look for the posting. That's the best I can tell you right now. So, Wednesday, November 30th, 7:00 PM. And thank you all.
Diane, I would like to compliment the group on taking initiative to come together, to channel your discussion. I realize it's challenging, but it's also helpful of bringing it together instead of social media coming from 10,000 different directions, and also finding your common challenges, so that it helps us to address them. So, I actually thank you for channeling that. We've had a number of other issues of parents, you know, raising concerns about things, and it seems that once we started channeling it and addressing it together as a group, that much better success comes of it. So, there's a lot to be listened to for all of us, but I applaud you for your leadership in channeling it and making it productive. So, thank you.
Liza, can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
Just to save me a -- I see Katie's in the audience. Are there minutes coming from the parents-only meeting, or have they already come, and I just haven't seen them yet?
We have not.
Okay.
But yeah, there are minutes that will come, will have them officially approved at our December 14th meeting. The majority of that meeting was spent in subcommittee time, but the outcome of those subcommittee time in those vision statements and in the information request behind there, so I wouldn't -- I don't think there's a great deal more information that you'll get from minutes that you don't see here, but I'll work on getting the draft version of this.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, six, unfinished business. To act on a revision to Policy 1.15, adding language about volunteers as proposed by the policy Subcommittee, and Aileen Calnan, chair of our policy Subcommittee, is going to lead the discussion.
So, there is a revised draft in the packet of our new proposed Section 1.15 regarding volunteers, and there's only one single change from the last time that you saw this, and in response to several different entities making comments. Dr. Gallow spoke with some of the principals and some comments that were made here at the last meeting. We did add in a new bullet, 1, 2, 3, 4, the fifth bullet, where we added in cooperate timely in completing any necessary legal requirements of specific volunteer positions, including but not limited to Cory and SAFIS. So, we wanted to separate that out from the section before that talks about carrying out the duties and requirements of their specific volunteer positions, so that it's clear that not every volunteer will have to submit to Cory and SAFIS, but if you are required to, that you will cooperate. I did not get any other comments after that initial presentation, and so, with that said, certainly, people have comments tonight. We're happy to hear them, but we would like to actually put this to a vote this evening.
So. I'll make a motion that we approve the volunteer policy, Section 1.15, as outlined in the document we have.
For us.
Okay, any discussion for their comments? Oh, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All of them opposed? Great. We appreciate all the parent volunteers all across our district. They're very valuable, and this will just confirm how we all act together and work together and be productive for our students. So, we're glad that we found this in our policy review as we were going through the manual. Okay, next, new business. 7.1, to hear a report from Plymouth River School, including the school council improvement plan update from 2015, 2016, and the proposed plan for 2016, 2017. And we have Chuck Cormier, our principal, and Melissa Smith, the assistant principal from Plymouth River School, to present to us.
Oh, thank you for allowing me to share our plan with you, and thanks to Melissa Smith for helping to put together this presentation with me. First, we'll shift right away to 2015, 2016 goals. We had four goals. The first goal was focused on the pilot of either Journeys or Wonders reading program, and in that pilot, all action steps were met. Our focus was on grade-level team meetings to receive feedback on the progress of the pilot. We also had staff meetings in which presentations were provided to all staff, so we had a good sense of how the programs were moving forward and whether they would be a good fit for our school. And finally, observations by administration to provide teachers with feedback on their teaching and implementation of the program, and also enter into collaborative conversations on how they might be improved. The second goal, which I will spend a little bit of time tonight going in more depth, but let it be said that the goal was completed. It was probably the most successful of all four goals. We had changed the focus of STEAM from a Saturday of activities to a full week, so all students would be able to participate, and I will talk a little bit more about that after we get through these next two goals. The third goal was a focus on math for students in Grade 2 who are struggling to meet grade-level standards. So, we developed a program in which students met three times a week from 8:30 to 9 o'clock, three out of six days on a cycle. And while the program met with good success, that program also led to a second year, and we're looking at it again this year, to do some improvement on the types of activities that we implemented, the computer programs that we used, assessments that we were not satisfied with, and specific data for entrance and exit criteria for students. So, we're working on that now, and so that is now in its second year, as well as the first goal, which really is in its second year with similar action steps, but now we are doing the same steps with the Journeys program in watching it very closely and meeting with teachers as the year progresses. The fourth goal was dropped after our math specialists reviewed some of the management systems for everyday math. We did not find good alignment with that program. And with the pilot of the reading program, we felt it was a little bit of an overkill, so we dropped that and won't continue with it, but we'll be certainly searching for management programs that help us organize data so that we can be prescriptive with our instruction. The 2016-17 goals, as I said, the first goal really sort of morphed into a second year, but looking at Journeys and really making sure that it's well-implemented using similar action steps. Our second goal, again, is extending our STEAM week, which we found very successful, but we found that we needed considerable offerings after school. After-school programs were oversubscribed, and not all students could get into them, so we want to look at extending activities and maybe bringing on some additional instructors. And our third goal is, as I said, looking at providing small-group math support to Tier 3 students, and we are making good progress on that right now. What I'd like to do is to look at our STEAM week, which is what our school spent most of its time on. The program, first of all, the program could not have been successful without the support of our parent volunteers. They worked long and hard on this, most of them helping with instruction and materials preparation. And the other piece of it was, every activity that we completed focused on student collaboration. So, students worked in teams for all of the STEAM challenges. Different grades showed their developmental readiness to work as a team to solve common problems, and teachers were interested in their comments back and how we looked at sort of the spectrum of students from K through 5, and where cooperation and collaboration was really at quite a sophisticated level and where it was quite weak. One activity, which included making a roller coaster out of ramps, kids were working on it at a young age collaboratively, but they never thought that you couldn't just do one piece here, one piece here, and put them together, because both had hills that came like this, and you weren't going to get up the other hill, especially if you're using two spheres. But we had a great time with it. So, what we're going to, if you look at that engineering and design process, that was a hallmark in every one of our activities. So, that came to us, of course, from Katie Roberts and in her work with our teachers. So, we used that process in almost every activity, where kids learned how to define problems, plan solutions, make models, test them, and then reflect and redesign, and that feedback loop was very important, and happened almost naturally as we worked through these activities. Our STEAM week was May 31st to June 3rd, and it included teachers, parents, and administration in the development of activities. So, some of the highlights of it, so this gives us a sense of the structure, that grade-level teams were assigned the task of developing four activities that they implemented during the day. Our specialists also identified, developed STEAM activities that integrated with their disciplines. I planned a number of activities with parents that were conducted after and during school. Those activities included chemistry, which is now moving into our science program because of the science Common Course Data Standards, and engineering and design units that looked at structures such as creating geodesic domes and looking at ramps for potential and kinetic energy. And finally, our teacher, through an HEF brand, secured Merillis Bren Bataclan, and he came to our school, and what he did is he worked with our whole school at an assembly, and I think other schools in the district have done the same thing. I know certainly South has worked with him. And so, he came, worked with students in a full assembly, and then worked with our 5th-grade students designing characters that would integrate with STEAM week, and then he took those characters that And then he took those characters that they designed with him and then created a mural to reflect the week. So really had a good time integrating art into this whole program. I'm going to review, we're going to show you a slideshow, but before we do, I will try to highlight some of the things you'll see in that slideshow. It's very short, but I think to give it some context would be helpful. First, we'll, you're going to be seeing a brief clip on an equipment manager and educational staff of the Boston Bruins. So kids being into the interest in the Bruins, we're able to get them to the school, who talked to kids and brought equipment and showed them how science can be used in the customization of hockey equipment for better performance. So things like angle of a skate is sharpened, the blade is sharpened, angle of a stick, and flexibility of sticks were some of the things they talked about. I designed a roller coaster challenge with parents that focused on the essential questions. Can you design a roller coaster that provides the longest possible ride? What is the greatest distance it can cover? Is it possible for your sphere to hit a target? Do small spheres travel at the same rate of speed? Those are some of the essential questions, and some of the concepts we looked at were moment of inertia, gravity, friction, and force. Of course, with different age groups, I think I did that from second through fourth grade, it was certainly adjusted, and some of it was just experiential and exploratory, and some of it was active teaching. So we'll see how that looks on the slides. Our librarian, you'll see that she developed activities around simple machines and folk rooms and levers and gearing systems and how variables of size of gears, number, and location will affect energy transfer. A second activity I did with fifth graders was quite, quite exciting, and it was a chemical and exothermic reaction as we decomposed hydrogen peroxide using yeast as a catalyst. So it was quite dramatic in which we take a little hydrogen peroxide, put a little soap in it, and throw some yeast in it, and it kind of explodes up. And something that was interesting, something that's very caustic, and you wouldn't want to get in your hands, so you'll see kids with goggles and so forth on it. When that decomposition happens, it just ends up being water and oxygen. So you can, you'll see them kind of playing in soap and water. That will be, that was kind of fun. But getting at science the same way. And the nice thing about how we integrated technology is we took vernier probes, my tech specialist, Tina Weiner, took vernier probes as it was going on. Now you can imagine all this soap splattering up in hydrogen peroxide in a computer lab. So we calmed her down a bit, and then we went ahead with it. And so kids are sticking these vernier probes into the solution, and they see an exothermic reaction, and it's graphed using software on a smart board. And they see, for example, going from room temperature up to about 120 degrees, things they haven't experienced yet. So this was a great opportunity for that. Our math specialist did a STEAMobile, and she had a variety of activities that kids took part in in the cafeteria. They signed up for it, such as Da Vinci catapults and rocket designs and cantilevers. Fifth grade students took part in a collaborative work session with Jeff and Joan Amade. They are two parents in our school. Jeff is a business consultant who works with businesses on identifying problems and looking to the future to make real-world solutions. And so he actually took that model with our fifth graders and worked with them on developing real-world problems that are concerned to them. And interestingly enough, our students focused on topics dealing with equality, such as racial issues, special needs, women's rights, pollution, global warming, and protection of endangered animals. Had a visit from the robotics club from the high school and showed us how robots are made and how they have a robot that they have programmed and developed that was able to target, target a ball and kick it. So that was a great opportunity for third graders to see that. You're going to see other kinds of things in here, such as kids making bird's nests and creating geodesic domes. Buckminster Fuller's design to show them how triangles give you a much better support. We did that with paper tubes. And fourth grade students investigated wind turbines, an extension of what they do in their fourth grade classrooms. And I think we will show you the video, and I think the last piece is what they did in Phys Ed, which was a pipeline challenge. So let's see what this looks like. And so there's the, the kids exploring a skate and how it's angled for better performance. With the equipment manager, here are our roller coasters, and you can see the variety of contraptions they make trying to meet the essential questions that were given to And they got more and more creative as they looked at other teams. To be honest. How did you get that? It is collaboration, it's not copying. There's our librarian, nice to see, working with science and doing balances with changing folk rooms, and also, as I mentioned, the gearing systems. And there are our robotics folks from the high school, did a great job. Kids love seeing that. This is that, we call it elephant toothpaste, this exothermic reaction. And just wearing the goggles was a hit. That was, you know, they knew they were in real science then, and you can see kind of some of it, and the foam just keeps coming out and doesn't stop. But interestingly enough, you can then put your hands in it, and because it decomposed that there's no danger. And there they are with the vernier probes, trying to measure the temperature change. I was trying to explain to them the chemical formula there. And this is some of the items, and she, I know Blake Doyle also did this at Foster School, that kids were doing on the STEAMobile, just a variety of activities that offered a variety of design challenges. And kids really did love that. And they also did a little bit with ramps. Their goal was to make a loop-de-loop on that. You can see just different age groups doing the same kinds of activities, you're just getting different kind of results from them. There's that collaborative problem solving that I told you about. The nice thing there is they actually had their graphic designer, a graphic facilitator, representing everything the kids said in sort of cartoon pictures. It was great. There's our, one of our geodesic domes that the kids had to get in. So that took about two hours to build with them. So that was a challenge. Bridge work in second grade, and making towers. And we have a second grade teacher, Cindy Benati, who has a pet turtle named Arlo that everybody wants to be in her classroom because it's a pet turtle when you're leaving first grade. And so what we did is we changed that and made a design, she made a design challenge in which you needed to build a prototype of a habitat for a pet, like a turtle. And so that's what the kids are doing there, and then they took that, and we developed a habitat outside that's probably six by six, so that a parent worked with her to do that. And so we, she went from the prototype to the real thing. And you can see Plymouth River kids never shy away from photography. This is fourth grade extending their work in their fourth grade classrooms to wind turbines. And there's Katie Roberts and Brian Conroy doing a lot of work with them, and that was good. So they added a little bit more to that, making this our science program a little bit more enriched. And this is going to be just some younger kids in that STEAMobile that you're seeing them now. You can see a little bit more different kinds of excitement with younger children and how they're approaching each problem. And this is a pipeline challenge developed by our gym teacher, and it's a series of pipes, and the kids have to get it from one point to another cooperatively by using gravity and making slopes to get it to the end. And so a lot of these activities were quite cooperative. And finally, some parachutes were designed. So that is STEAM week. And any questions?
One.
Good? Thank you.
You did say that all the kids that sign up for it can't take it?
No, what I said, yeah, well, actually, I ended up taking everyone. I, so I had, we had a couple of after-school activities, and principally, the biggest one was this roller coaster. As soon as you say you're going to build a roller coaster, that was the mistake.
I admit.
I should have said you're working with ramps. So roller coaster just was catchy enough. So what happened is I was going to do it one afternoon for an hour, and so I ended up doing four afternoons. So we really didn't say no, but we're going to have to work on that and see if we can get additional people constructing and offer more activities. Because it was such an exciting time, and kids really wanted to be part of it, that I tried to do a first come, first serve, and I had a wait list, and it was, I could just see parents starting to fume, so I said, we're not going to have that. So we just did more. So that was the, the issue that we're trying to resolve for this year, which shouldn't be a problem, especially now that parents have seen it. I think they feel confident that they can teach some of it also. Yeah. Good?
That's great.
I just wanted, it seemed like everything was indoors, but it was the end of May. Was it like, did you, did you try to go outside?
We didn't try to go outside, and that was a piece that we wanted to do and really never did. We did have some things going on in our garden, but when we were looking at STEAM, we were looking for mostly as a physics piece, and that was why we didn't go outside as much. I did want to push it in that direction originally, and it just wasn't quite getting there. The Arlo habitat was outside.
Right.
So Arlo's got a big fenced-in thing now. Turtle's about that big.
Can always go there in the future if you want.
Yeah. But that's something I'd like to look at, especially with math and science. Great integration there for nature. Good? Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Chuck, before you go, we are very sad we'll miss you.
Oh, thank you.
Mr. Cormier is retiring at the end of this year, so since you're here with us onstage, thank you very much for your long, long, dedicated, creative service to the children. We really appreciate everything you've done.
And thank you for this school committee and school committees of the past for their support, because I would not have been half as successful without their support. And certainly, beyond the school committee, a couple of people come to mind that we look at professionals in your career that have been important to me. Certainly, one was our former superintendent, Gary Baker, who hired me 23 years ago. Remember the onsite, and Doc Gallo sort of in the background watching me, saying, hmm, I wonder what she's thinking? And then, and then secondly, the second, or equally important, was, was Dr. Gallo, who has been a mentor and a friend, supported me through all sorts of parts of my career, and we're lucky to have her. And I'm sure she'll still be on for a long while. I thought it was going to outlast her, but it didn't happen. So thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Chuck.
Next up, 7.2, to hear MCAS testing and accountability reports from spring of 2016, and our assistant superintendent, Jamie Labill-Watt, will present these two annual reports. And these reports will be available to the public on the website afterwards, so no need to take Kopey's notes.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm very excited to be here to talk to you about the really fantastic performance of our students last spring on the Massachusetts Comprehensive Assessment System. If you wouldn't mind just grabbing the lights, just so that it makes a little bit easier to see the slides. Thank you. So to begin, most families should have received their parent score reports that outlines the performance of their child on last spring's assessment. What I will note is, as you know, this state has been undergoing a transition in their assessment structure. And last spring, the state was field testing next-generation type questions, or PARC-like questions. And PARC refers to the consortium that Massachusetts was a member of, and roughly a little over half of the school districts last spring administered the PARC assessments rather than MCAS. So as the state was preparing for the transition to a next-generation platform, they were field testing a number of questions. And so on the parent score reports, you'll notice that there were sort of PARC-like questions and scores reported there. What is important to note is none of those scores impacted the student's overall rating. So they were field testing the questions, they weren't assessing the students. So I just wanted to make that point at the outset, that there was a little bit of confusion among some who felt that, you know, the, that this brought my score down, or did it, and it was a lot of questions and confusion. I just want to be really clear that none of those field-tested questions impacted results. So I just wanted to sort of, at the outset, sort of clarify that point. So as we think about the presentation this evening, there's really two parts. The first part will be an overview of our current accountability status with the state. And then we'll get into the actual MCAS performance that then lended itself to that accountability rating. So when we talk about accountability, there are several different components that we'll talk about this evening. The first are the school percentiles. So one of the metrics that is used is every school in the Commonwealth does receive a percentile which talks about their performance against similar grade-level span schools. So if you're a K to five school, your percentile is based against the performance of all the other K to five schools in the Commonwealth. The next are the accountability assistance levels, and those range from one to five. Level one is the highest performing school or school district, with level five being the lowest, lowest performing. And the results there are reported for all students and the high-needs subgroup, which is the new subgroup that was created several years ago under our accountability waiver to the federal government, which essentially took three independent groups, kids with disabilities, second language learners, and free and reduced lunch or low-income students, and sort of amalgamated them into one sort of power subgroup made up of the three individual groups of kids. So if there's any confusion, the high needs is, again, a combination of our students with disabilities, our students with English language learning proficiency gains, and students who are low income, just to clarify. One of the components they look at is a minimum of 95% participation rate, right? So school districts must have 95% of our students participating in the assessment structure, and that holds true for English language arts, mathematics, and science. The Annual Progress and Performance Index, or the PPI, is a score based from 0 to 100. It's a measure of improvement toward the ultimate goal of 100% proficiency. And it measures improvement toward the indicator targets over two years, and the target here is going to be 75. So anything 75 or above, and the group or the school is considered to have met its target. Anything under 75, the progress really isn't where it needs to be in order for that school or that subgroup to make their progress over a period of time. The cumulative, just to confuse it, the cumulative progress and performance index is a combination of assessment data, including indicators on performance and growth over the last four years. And again, similarly, they need a 75 or above sort of combination of the score to actually be saying that they're making progress toward their target. And finally, the C PPI indicators, so and here's where you get points, right, to lend themselves into those 0 to 100 scores. So there is X amount of points for narrowing the proficiency gap in English language arts, math, and science. There are certain points awarded for growth in English language arts and math. If you are able to increase kids during in the advanced range, you receive points. If you're able to have a 10% decrease in warning or failure, you receive points. So all those points factor in, and what, and that, those points then go into the 0 to 100 score, if that makes sense. So all those individual targets, proficiency gap, growth, 10% increase in advanced, 10% decrease in warning, failure, high school graduation rate, dropout rate, those individual variables sort of come together to give you points toward your target of 75. So let's start with the actual results of Hingham Public Schools. So this slide shows the percentile ranked performance of all six of our schools. Hingham High School was ranked at this 89th percentile, and the way to read that is, Hingham High School performed as well or better than 89% of high schools with the same grade span, right? So the same grade, nine to 12. Hingham Middle School performed at the 86th percentile, or as well or better than 86% of middle schools across the Commonwealth. East Elementary School at the 90th. East Elementary School at the 98th percentile, Foster Elementary at the 96th, Plymouth River at the 99th, and South Elementary School at the 98th. It's also worth noting that both Plymouth River School and South Elementary School were identified as 2016 commendation schools by the commissioner for high achievement of their students. So congratulations, I know both Chuck and me are here, so again, congratulations to both Plymouth River and South Elementary. This gives an overview of the CPPI targets and levels by the school. So again, remember, we're looking for that 75 score, 75 or above, to be saying that they're making their target. In the aggregate, all students across the board are making progress toward their targets. However, what you'll notice is Hingham Middle School and Foster Elementary are both Level 2. And if you look at the middle column, the second column with the numbers, they're under high needs, you'll note that it's the 51 here, and again, remember, they had to be at 75 to say that they're making their target. The 51 and the 67 both equate to Level 2 status. And they're both in Level 2 status because of the performance of their high-needs subgroup on MCAS. So let's, speaking of MCAS, let's sort of do a brief review of the assessments from last spring. You should have received in your packets comprehensive reports of both accountability and MCAS performance, but tonight's presentation is designed to give you sort of a 30,000-foot overview of the performance with those reports going far more in-depth, right, relative to the performance of various groups. So generally speaking, grades 3 through 8 and grade 10 participate in both English language arts and mathematics. Grades 4, 7, and 10 have an additional English language composition, where they're actually asked to construct a piece of writing. Grades 5 and 8 participate in science, technology, and engineering exams. Grade 9 or 10 participate in science and technology, and at this level, they're content-specific courses, so that you either take the biology exam or the chemistry exam. The questions are comprised of both multiple choice, open response, short answer, as well as some writing prompts. So the present, the data that we're going to look at this evening, first, it will be the percentage of students, when you see numbers in columns, that's going to represent the percentage of students who perform either at proficient or advanced levels on the exams. We'll also see information on the CPI, the Composite Performance Index. And again, this is the measure of progress toward that goal of 100% advanced and proficient, as well as the result of the student growth percentile, which is a measure of progress in the student's performance over the previous year's performance compared against their academic peers. What's important to note before we go further and get into the actual data is, remember early in this presentation, I explained that a little over half of the districts in the Commonwealth participated in PARK, which means that when we get to the MCAS results, we don't have a lot of state data that we can compare ourselves against the state, and that's because the overall and the number of kids in the MCAS data didn't raise to the level that you could actually draw comparisons against. So we do not have any state comparisons. For most of our data, we do see it with the science and technology, again, because everyone took science and technology, and we have the comparison for our high school performance, but we don't have that, that data for grades 3 through 8 in English or math. So you'll see some blanks in the column, and that's just because we don't actually have the state data. This is an overall view of the percentage of our students at advanced or proficient level, for last spring. Again, you'll note that our performance remains relatively strong. We do have some areas of relative weakness, we also have some areas of relative strength. I'll draw your attention to 100% of our students in grade 10 at Hingham High School, 100% are advanced or proficient in English language arts, 95% are advanced or proficient in grade 10 math, and 96% are proficient in science. So while, I think, you know, we can sort of get down into the weeds of sort of what grade performed where, but I think the overall sort of takeaway is, the exam that is needed to pass for graduation is grade 10. And I think while there is variation across the grades and across the content areas, for me, the takeaway here is, overall, right, 100% of our students make it there in English by grade 10, 95% make it in math by grade 10, and 96 in science. Some of our, the all grades now, is it going to be a comparison of sort of when you take all the grade levels in the particular content area and average them together, what is the performance. Grade 10, you'll note that we are higher than the state across all the metrics provided, as well as higher than the state relative to science, technology, and engineering in both grades 5 and grade 8, where state data is available. This next slide gives an overview summary of the Composite Performance Index results from last spring. And this is, again, a measurement toward that goal of 100% proficiency. We see some variation across the grades, but you'll note that almost all of them are in the 90s, and we have, so 95% or 90% are higher towards making their goals of proficiency, with our two areas of relative weakness in 8th grade math and grade 8 science, technology, and engineering. But again, for both science, technology, and engineering in grades 5 and 8, our performance is higher than our state peers. In grade 10, you'll note, again, our performance is above the state average. In the all grades, we're unable to make any comparisons against the state because of the data, the lack of data across the grade levels and content areas. This gives an overview, review of the student growth percentiles coming out of the spring MCAS results in English and math for both grades 4, 5, 6 through 8, and then grade 10. Again, we don't have a lot to compare it to, but we do have all of our elementary performance in the area of high growth, so 6-year above is considered high growth. You'll note that all of the grade 4 ELA, grade 4 math, 5 ELA, 5 math are all in the high-growth range, and at the middle school, our 7th grade ELA is considered to be high growth as well, as well as overall ELA and strong performance close to the state. Again, at the grade 10 level, the SGP gets a little bit, the calculations get a little funky because they're not taking anything grade 9, so they're actually doing a higher-level statistical analysis to compare grade 8 to grade 10. So take that with a grain of salt, because it's statistically a little off compared to the other year-to-year, year-over-year comparisons that can be made. So overall, some strengths. So the performance of Hingham students scoring at the proficient or advanced level and the CPI levels are higher than the state percentages where they're reported, and the state CPI is in every grade level subject tested. The highest scores are, again, grade 10 ELA, with 100% of our kids advanced and proficient, 95 in math, and 96 in science, both, again, from grade 10. Grade 8 ELA at 90% advanced or proficient. Grade 7 ELA at 92% advanced or proficient. Grade 6 ELA at 92%. Grade 5 ELA at 90, and grade 4 math at 91. The highest CPIs are for grade 10, ELA, math and science; grade 8 ELA; grade 7 ELA; grade 6 ELA; grade 5 ELA, math and science; grade 4 ELA, math and ELA, sorry, and grade 3, reading and math. The median SGP's are high at grade 10, again, 62, and the CPIs by gender for males and females are similar across all grade levels and subject areas. So there's no significant gender difference in the performance at MCAS. And the range of scores across our four elementary schools do remain relatively consistent with previous years and across the four buildings. Some challenges. So the lowest scores are at grade 8 in math and grade 8 in science. It's also to note that the previous year in grade 7, that cohort was also low in math coming out of grade 7, or on the grade 7 exam as well. The CPI scores for our students with disabilities are significantly lower than their typically developing peers across all grade levels and subjects. Students in the high-needs subgroup are not making their performance targets at either Hingham Middle School or at Foster Elementary School. And again, that's the reason those two buildings are at Level 2, and the district is considered Level 2 because we take the rating of our lowest-performing school. Some improvement steps. So we will continue the analysis of district, school, and student results, looking at item analysis and disaggregated results with teaching staff at department grade level and faculty and administration meetings. What's important to note here is we are really looking at ensuring a smooth transition. So we are, as we sunset the traditional MCAS exam and look forward to the next-generation MCAS exam, we're really sort of using the data to help inform our current instruction and also to sort of give us some sense of sort of where to move forward to ensure our students are positioned well for the next-generation assessment. We will continue the use of MCAS scores, item analysis, and additional assessment results to track and monitor individual student performance and cohort results, but it will be slightly tricky going into next spring because we will be hitting reset on sort of our ability to draw year-over-year comparisons going back beyond this year. We continue the implementation of intervention and challenge initiatives, strategy programs at all levels, including RTI and K-5 and literacy, targeted math instruction at grades 1, 2, and 3 in math, and South and Foster actually offer additional math support at K-5 due to Title I funds, that they're able to sort of actually fund someone to work in grades 4 and 5. Literacy lab, STEM lab, and co-top math at grade 6, and additional math preparation periods for kids at risk in grades 6, 7, and 8 across the middle school. Some improvement steps continued. Continued opportunities for students to practice answering a variety of question types and assessment measures to practice test-taking strategies. Again, as we move to the next-generation assessment, we're also preparing our students to engage in grades 4 and 8 in online assessment, to ensure that they've had that exposure, and the instructional technology teachers are working very hard to ensure that the kids receive the practice that they need, to ensure that there's a level of comfort with the assessment. We continue our emphasis on the use of instructional strategies that promote critical thinking, standard problem-solving, and writing for a variety of purposes. Use of the supervision and evaluation process to ensure consistent implementation of curriculum standards. The special education department will be directing a focus on measurable goal writing and ensuring associated data collection methods upon progress toward those goals to ensure that we can ongoingly sort of track and monitor student performance and not sort of wait till sort of, you know, the big MCAS comes to sort of see if they're making progress. We want to make sure that we're tracking and monitoring their progress on an ongoing basis. We'll also be working with the special ed departments to ensure that the IEP goals are effectively aligned with grade-level learning expectation and content, to ensure that our students are receiving access to the grade-level content in a supportive way that sort of meets their needs, but the expectation that they are meeting the content standards in that grade are there, and the special ed department is ready to work to ensure that the goals are aligned, and they're also looking at their goal-writing methods and data collection processes to ensure more consistent, ongoing monitoring of student progress. So our Level 2 schools, so because they are Level 2 status, there are some additional sort of requirements put on them to look at their data and sort of do a self-assessment. As Dr. Steller mentioned when she was here giving the Foster School Improvement Update, she is preparing the rollout of her acceleration agenda, which will look at a series of activities designed and aligned to ensure students that we continue to accelerate the good work our students are doing, to make sure they find the appropriate supports where needed. So they will, they will be looking, really, her Foster and the middle school, actually, because there are two Level 2 schools, at analyzing their data of their high-needs population, right? So where exactly are the breakdowns occurring? Are they by a particular strand? Are they by a particular content area? And how then are we ensuring student success when we go back to how we're teaching, the teaching and learning that happens day-to-day? So the goal of the data isn't to sort of live and die by the data, it's to help us inform our practice. And so as you unpack it, maybe there's a particular strand that we're not hitting as well as we should, or a particular sort of standard that we haven't addressed as we should. They'll also be looking at reviewing and then implementing the conditions for school effectiveness, which are sort of a self-assessment process that schools go through to ensure that their instruction is aligned, that their curriculum is aligned, that their support services are in place, again, to ensure that the school is as effective as it could be in actually delivering the supports and services back to their students. They'll be revising their school improvement plans with interventions and support strategies to support their high-needs population. We will be disseminating out the DESE report cards to parents, and they'll, the accountability letter, that will probably come out sometime middle of next week, which will notify the families in the building of their level, as well as what supports are available to help support our struggling learners. And we also, as we have in previous years, will be prioritizing our Title I funds toward our Level 2 schools. So again, that was a very sort of general overview of two very comprehensive reports that you would have received. But at this point, if there's any questions or comments, I'd be more than happy to do my best to address them for you.
Question?
Okay, yes. Michelle, would you hit the lights? While you're up.
Do you know how next year's going to look with MCAS 2? I call it MCAS 2.0, I know it has different names. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I understand that school districts will be held immune to results of the new MCAS, but are parents still going to be receiving information about evaluations of those scores?
Yes.
As well as the school districts?
Yes. So we're held harmless for the accountability level. And what's also worth noting, just last Thursday at our leadership team, I gave the leadership team an overview of the revised accountability structure. So the Elementary and Secondary Education Act has been reauthorized last spring, and now it's the Every Student Succeeds Act, or ESSA. ESSA has new provisions in place for accountability, and that was under President Obama's administration. And that was really to sort of take the feedback that we've received relative to no child left behind, and sort of live in the sort of the over-focus, or the perception of over-focus on data, as opposed to sort of looking at the whole child. So the state is currently, as we roll out the next-generation assessments, are also rolling out a new revised accountability structure, which will likely go hand-in-hand. So we won't get any results this coming, on this coming spring's performance, we will not receive accountability data, but we will receive student data, and parents will receive parent reports, just like they did this year, that outline the student's performance on the assessments.
So Jamie, I have a question, a question and a thought. So last year, I remember hearing this, and the middle school was having some issues with math, and you referenced that in particular with one grade. Is there something about that cohort in that particular grade that is impacting its testing success?
At least it was the lower, lowest grade last year. Some grades and classes do differ from one year to the other, sometimes fairly dramatically. So it wasn't a surprise that they were the lowest of the grades, you know, how low is low, and how much have they improved? That's hard to say, but there are cohorts that are weaker than others, and you see that all the way through.
Okay. I would like to get an update on this data analysis, in particular for the two Level 2 schools, maybe prior to MCAS, and see maybe what you have gleaned after looking at some of this and some of your actions.
After MCAS this spring, you mean?
No, before MCAS.
Right, so.
So not before you have the results, but just from your working as a school community about the types of steps that you've taken and maybe what you have.
Oh, sure, okay, I see what you're saying.
What you have learned from analyzing those, the test results, and looking at threads that maybe we missed, or that the kids just didn't understand, to kind of, before they actually take the test, to kind of educate us about, this is what we've learned and we've done as we've gone along.
Sure. I think we could provide an update from both the Foster School Acceleration and the Middle School activities?
Yeah, for the two, for the two Level 2 schools.
I think the other thing that we might provide is that both Laney Silver and Dave Jewett have done summaries that they have sent to the individual teachers at the different grade levels, analyzing the differences in what we know at this point about the MCAS 2 and what will be tested there in the prior MCAS, because as you can imagine, teachers are nervous about, am I doing the right things, and should we be teaching differently in preparation for the MCAS 2 than we did for the MCAS? So those are very nice summaries, concise for teachers. The second thing is that by Monday, we should have up two recent PowerPoints that were produced by DESE and have been shown repeatedly.
They're up now, actually. They're up now.
They're up now, okay. And so we put them there because I think for people who have some interest in the community about this whole topic and how the tests are produced and what they focus on, and how they're scored and so on, they're two very readable, nice summaries, very colorful. So where are they, Jamie?
I believe they're on the assessment page.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Cynthia?
I know that in the, you know, past years, teachers have been able to use prior MCAS questions to sort of, you know, get the kids comfortable with what they're going to.
Ready, sure.
Yeah. Are they gonna give us examples?
Yes, so actually, in January, the state will be releasing the MCAS practice tests, which will be available in both sort of paper-based and online format, so kids can sort of experience a new test structure. And actually, until such time as they're released, we've been working with the instructional technology teachers, and they've actually been using the Park Online environment to sort of begin the work. So they're not waiting until January, they've sort of been looking at a variety of sort of formats that we know are gonna be present on the MCAS 2.0. So the Park sort of test sites are already there and live, and we can log in, and the kids can sort of take practice tests, it gives them a sense of, at this point, the Park, we're using it more for the tools, right? So sort of how to expand a text box, how to sort of call out different tools, and then the actual MCAS 2, next generation, the artist's full name is MCAS, we should call it, right? The next, so the next generation assessments will be out in January.
Okay.
For actual practice use.
Okay, thanks.
Jamie, the two Level 2 schools that the high-need cohort is below 75, is the proof in the pudding a year from now, to expand on what Carol was asking, is that the results, final results don't come in till about a year from now?
So these results are from last spring.
Right.
So I don't know that I understood...
What I'm driving at is to pick up on what Carol talked about, rather than a discussion of what's the two schools are doing, we have an interim report.
Okay, about what they've done?
How the kids are doing, so we don't wind up a year from now getting, oh, boy.
Well, that's one of the problems of the timelines, that we get the results in the fall, and they're initially embargoed because they want us to look and make sure that we've submitted every test and every kid has a score and so on, and so then later in the fall, we get the real results, and later in the fall, we get the level, the level assignment, and then the tests start up again in the spring. So there's not even a full year of difference. We don't know what the timeline is gonna be for receiving these results. It will be what it is. For the Park, for the past two years, the results have come out even later than the MCAS.
Well, it's hard in Hingham to compare our two middle schools because we don't have two middle schools, we have one.
Right.
But we have four elementary schools, and one of the four is, to me anyway, an outlier.
Well, the one that's a Level 2 was actually a Level 1 last year, and one of the Level 1s was the Level 2 last year.
Exactly.
So again, there's variation from year to year.
I'm just gonna go back, because I want to put it in context. Remember that the reason they're in status, right, the reason they're Level 2 is because of the performance of their subgroups.
Right.
The high-need subgroup. Having said that, Foster, for example, is still at the 96th percentile of elementary schools.
Right.
Right, so I don't know that they're an outlier, it could have been the composition of kids, the, sort of the fluctuation of that population of kids does vary, I mean, so like the, we have two schools that flipped sort of designations because of the performance of the same population of kids. And there's lots of reasons why that may have happened. I don't know that I would characterize it as outliers, right? I think what we have to do is get better at educating our most-at-risk kids, right? That's it. So I don't know that it's a school problem, but the folk...
Yeah.
Okay, so the focus is on what are we doing to target intervention and instruction for a particular cohort of kids? I don't know that it's, if we go back to sort of the overall summative performance, the kids are, I really am proud of the results they had, I mean, they're doing well. I think what the data analysis and so that work, that's where you see sort of, when we're talking about sort of next steps and what's to come, sort of the strategic partnership with the special ed department relative to, so how are we doing this on a more ongoing basis? How are we restructuring the goals that we're writing? How are we then tracking data? How are we putting into place sort of internal management and measuring structures that are gonna be, I guess, independent of the statewide assessment? Because the statewide assessment is only one piece of data in a sort of really big sort of mosaic of what makes up a child. And so I don't want to put an overemphasis someplace where that, I think it gives a disproportionate sort of view of the performance of our schools, right? I think we have, again, a sort of a population of kids who clearly the data is suggesting us that we need to get better at educating, and so that's what we're trying to do. It's not gonna be on an overall sort of big-picture scale because the progress is measured differently. So to your point, I mean, I can give you an update of the activities that we've engaged in and sort of where the middle school and Foster are relative to what they've done, but I don't know that I can say, so here's how it's gonna play out with the assessment. We still don't even know what that, the next generation assessment's gonna play.
Jamie, I think...
Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, I think it does make sense. I think my understanding too is gonna be very hard to, it's gonna be very hard to evaluate, have we, the steps that you mentioned of how to improve is gonna be very hard to measure because they're gonna be just very different tasks, so...
Right, we're in an odd time.
It's gonna be very difficult to see, did that group improve next year when it's a completely different task.
It makes sense, because everything hits reset. So I can't go back, I mean, so what, all we can do is go sort of take action based on the data that we know, right? And this is the data that we know. So we will unpack, again, it's assessing the same standards, it's just doing it a little differently. So we're gonna go back to the root of what is the standard that's being assessed, how is it presented, how was it presented on the MCAS? How do we know it may be presented on next generation? And what are those steps that we're taking to ensure kids have exposure and practice or problem-solving? Because I'm a firm believer in the goal is to ensure regardless of how you give it to them, that kids can answer the question, right? That's our ultimate goal. It shouldn't matter if it's multiple choice or short answer, or if it's purple, pink, or blue, I mean, you give them the question, and they should be able to answer it. And I think that's important, and that's what we talked about, giving them multiple exposures, seeing it in multiple, giving them multiple opportunities to engage with the content.
I think also what might be helpful to give people is the number of students who are in the high-needs group in each building. It's a small number, and so sometimes the score of only one, two, or three students can make a difference in that rating, and we can be in the 99th percentile in terms of performance among all schools, but there's a very small group, and therefore, differences with just a couple of children can make a big difference. And I would, given the audience who's here, I would emphasize again, the high-needs group is not just special education.
Correct, yeah.
The high-needs group involves kids with socioeconomic concerns as well as ELL. We have a smaller number of kids with ELL, but you can imagine that some of them have a challenge, at least in their first years of learning the new language, which for them is English, so. So it might help you, I mean, it frustrates us all, when I say us, all educators, that we can have a school where learning can be at the 96th, 97th percentile, as was the case last year at one of our schools, and they were a Level 2 school, even though that was an extraordinary performance. And that kind of performance meant that a lot of our special ed kids did very, very well, because there was no way we could be that high without special ed students, many of them performing very, very well. So we give a lot of attention to the level thing. I personally think level should be based on the overall performance, and a number of other superintendents agree with me, but the commissioner doesn't yet. And so we're stuck with the formula that we have, but put that number in its place. It's a small number of students. It's a range of different kinds of needs that are represented there, and pay a lot of attention to how very high those elementary schools all are, and that is not possible without many of our special ed students performing very well.
I'd like to echo, I was gonna make a comment about what Dr. Gallo said. Last year, I did an in-depth analysis of South Schools accountability, and, you know, the cumulative rating on high needs, one of the, you know, we don't know when students move into our district and where they were coming from, and that, you know, impacted that, so I think it would be good to get a little more analysis of these high-needs groups so that we could understand, you know, what, how many students there are, what categories are they, and then look, maybe look at historic per school, and I guess I am a little worried about the middle school a little bit, but I'd want to understand that data a little closer. But I guess the other, one other point I'd like to make, so if we can get some more data on understanding that high-needs group, I think that will really help everybody...
Coming at it from different angles.
Yeah.
So when you say more data, what do you mean?
Well, a more breakdown of, you know, how many students are we talking about? What classification within the high-needs are they? And without, if it's too small of a group, I don't want to look at confidentiality issues, but if there's some way of us having further understanding of, you know, what are the issues we have to tackle?
Okay.
And I totally get that our staff is looking at it and...
So maybe I can talk about it in sort of general terms, of sort of, so the issue is, the reason we have a high-need subgroup is because the total N, so that the number of kids in special ed, ELL, and low income are too small? So we, I actually could be presenting to you on the overall performance, the high-needs performance, the special ed performance, the ELL performance, the low-income performance. Our N is so small that none of those three groups are big enough to form a subgroup, which is why we have sort of, under the new accountability structure, that's where this new high-needs come from. That's why it's an amalgam. So if I was to break, I mean, I can certainly, I want to be responsive to that feedback, and I can actually, we can do that, we can sort of give you a better sense of, so here are the areas we found. What's tricky is to give you student-level data that may, the N's gonna be so small that it actually could tell you who those kids were, which we...
We don't want that.
Okay, but I could, we can talk about sort of bigger-picture stuff around, sort of in that analysis, here's what we found, and that's actually what we're about to engage in at both of the schools. We haven't got there because it requires some time, some teacher release time to actually get everybody in a room to actually unpack all that. So that will come, and we will have that. And then from that, we're developing action plans to then go out and ensure that we're tracking and monitoring that throughout the rest of the year.
I just want to make two other points. I think it's great to have accountability, but I don't want to overdo it. I, if, my personal view, so that, you know, the percentage of time on practice tests, I think it's great to teach the kids the technical skills of opening boxes, and they can use that later in life, but I don't want to overstress them of worrying about too much practicing on the test. But, and then also, I'm most proud of that our high school students are stellar, and that's where we want to bring them, is to graduate from high school, and that Hingham launched them, when they're leaving Hingham, that they're launched in the right place. Everybody has their journey to get there, but...
Mm-hmm, they get there.
Our 10th graders are, you know, they've got their act together by the time what really counts and where we're launching them to. So I think, to me, that's the most important thing.
Totally agree. And that's why I said early on, I want to sort of, I'll give you the overview, but to put it in context, they get there.
Right?
So there might be variations up and down, we saw sort of ebb and flows, but with all things being equal, by grade, and that pattern's been consistent, right? So it's grade 10, that's where they have to make it, and 98-plus percent of them do, right? So again, I'm unbelievably proud of the work of our students. They did great.
Thank you.
Give a lot of fist bumps out there.
Good presentation for your first one on this topic.
I was slightly terrified, so I'm glad.
It's very, it's complicated.
I didn't pass out or anything.
It's complicated, man.
Well, thank you. Any other questions or thoughts? Great, thank you.
Good. All right. 7.3 to hear the proposed superintendent goals for 2016, 2017.
We have, we share technology over here.
Now, these are the goals that were part of the superintendent evaluation that we just completed, so this will be the beginning of the next cycle.
So there are five goals here articulated. I probably could have written 10 that address things that need to be addressed. I did six last year. The requirement is really four to six. I did five this year, but the reality is all the things that need to happen will happen regardless. So I've just given you kind of a summary here with a heading so you can see what the goal is about, and then the goal itself, and then some action steps, and several of these will be joint goals, which means a couple of us are going to be working on the same thing. So the first one is on special populations, it's under the category of a student learning goal, which is one of the categories that we need to address. So this is working with principals, special ed subcommittee, and CPAC to explore programs and practices to address unmet needs of special populations. That includes special ed, ELL, 504, et cetera. And you can see the bullets there clarifying the routes that are available for parents to express concerns about student needs and services and the options that exist. Establishing a relationship with the parent support group, newly formed. Discuss and consider for implementation new programs and emerging practices that may be suggested by CPAC or even by our own Hingham Public Schools staff. Create forums for the public school staff to express their own concerns and suggest resolutions. Provide budget information. We always provide budget information in a very public forum. Public is always welcome to every one of our budget meetings. One is specifically, don't devote it each year to special education. The information from that is posted on the website. Nevertheless, it may be that we would get better attendance if there were a meeting at CPAC, for example, to share that information and perhaps have more time to deal with specific questions about it. Try to foster a spirit of collaboration and a culture of respect in all the interactions among all of the groups that mentioned earlier, and reinforce understanding of the specific but different roles of CPAC and a parent support group, which we have not had before. Let me go through all of them just quickly, and then we can come back if there are questions or comments. This is a huge year for negotiations. I'm thinking that this is probably going to be time-consuming wise in terms of what the school committee and central office has to do, the biggest goal that we have for the year. We have upcoming negotiations to negotiate successive contracts in all six of our bargaining units, and those are all done independently of one another and requiring enormous amount of time and data. And so the school committee has a negotiations subcommittee that will conduct the negotiations, although several of us here are on that bargaining team. But also, we have to get ready for the different negotiations. We have to collect salary data, we have to look at demonstrating year-over-year growth and the personnel functions of the budget, disaggregating that data to show the costs of steps and lanes as well as any across-the-board increase that there might be. We have to collect the collective bargaining across-the-board increases and other data from comparable nearby communities to see where we are, because we all hire from the same pool of teachers, obviously, teachers and pairs and bus drivers and custodians and so on. We have to coordinate the development of a specific subcommittee, school committee proposal that will go to each one of the bargaining units, so that has to be developed at the beginning of the process, and then we participate in negotiations with each of the units. So that's a big, big chore, a lot of research and a lot of data that we have to put together as well as the proposal. Leadership transitions, this is something... Leadership transitions, this is something, all of these goals, by the way, uh, reflect looking at the mission and/or looking at the planning meeting for the school committee and what we talked about at that level, uh, some, some, um, of our own priorities, uh, in terms of the district and looking at the recently developed strategic plan. So leadership transitions, big, uh, topic the last several years. So, uh, one of my goals is to work with Jamie and we've already begun this. In fact, we're pretty, pretty far down the road already in getting, getting ready for, uh, the initial, um, process, which will be for our replacing Chuck. Well, we don't replace Chuck, but finding a successor to Chuck. We have to identify the likely, uh, transitions that are coming up. Two of them have been publicly announced and that is, is Chuck and Lainey Silva has also announced that she is moving on director of, um, English and Language Arts. And then develop proposed timelines and school commit, uh, screening committee membership for, um, each of the different, uh, roles that we have to fill. Facilitate postings and advertising, we've already done that, um, for the, um, replacement process. At least in, in Chuck's case, we haven't, uh, done anything more on any others at this point. We've got to monitor the development of the criteria for the screening committee and how they will, uh, identify candidates for interviews. And then based upon those interviews, uh, conduct the interviews, identifying the questions they will ask and then getting to me the names of semifinalists after the, um, candidates that they invite for interviews are, um, are interviewed and, um, reviewed. Then the four of us, uh, at central office conduct semifinalist interviews to determine whether all of the people interviewed is, um, as, uh, by the screening committee will either remain as, um, in the pool and become finalists or whether that will be windowed down a bit from there. And then conduct semifinalist, um, interviews, well, I'm sorry, skip over that one. Participate in related activities. We typically bring, um, candidates finalists to town to spend at least a part of a day. In the case of a principal's, uh, uh, process, part of coming to the town would be a public interview at the building. That's been our past process. And then we always go and spend at least a half a day in a community where any finalist is actually working, assuming it's in the state somewhere. And that has been the case in the last several years. And then recommend appointments to the school committee according to the timeline that we published and, and also then, uh, develop a draft of an individual contract because all of these, uh, principal candidates would all have, um, an individual candidate as do, um, central office candidates. Uh, department directors are members of the administrators association bargaining unit, so, uh, they would not have an individual contract, but they would be fit somewhere in that scale. And then, um, recommend the candidates, um, and, um, and determine what the dr- what the contract will be, whether it's, uh, the individual one and what the, um, components of that would look like or whether it's assigning someone to the, the appropriate place on a scale for the, uh, administrators association. Socio-emotional needs, this is huge. It's huge all over the country and in particular, uh, in Massachusetts with respect to the amount of attention that our, my peer superintendents are paying to this topic. We spent a whole year doing things last year. We're going to continue with that model, uh, this year. We're looking particularly at a, a tiered level, uh, of support. And analyzing the data, last year we had the adjustment counselors who, uh, collected data because we were saying anecdotally, you know, this is a huge issue. This is a big change. Our student populations are changing. We have many troubled families and, and some are students with special needs, many, um, perhaps the majority are not. So it's an issue across the, uh, across the board. And we, um, had the adjustment counselors try to quantify the categories into which those children fell so that we'd have data to support. Not only that, yes, our assumption, our observation is that there are a lot of issues out there, but in order to plan for those, um, responding to some of those challenges, we have to have better sense of how many children there are, at what grade levels they are and what particular kind of, uh, behavior or challenge they present. Things like school refusal, common with a lot of children with anxiety and depression, transition issues with a lot of those students. Staff training, um, we want to provide more of the staff process, uh, staff, um, training in social emotional. There's an awful lot of literature out there about, uh, why, um, and some of you read the book last year and heard the speaker. We had, uh, CPAC cosponsored the Nadja Riley presentation. Great book if you're interested in the data and if you're interested in some of the, 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 the suppositions about why these things occur. Also some pretty good practical advice for, for teachers, but we need more of that practical advice. And so that's a part of exploring and piloting program models and resources that have demonstrated a positive, demonstrated positive impact, not just proposed as maybe, uh, working. So the, it's the second year and virtually everybody in the district is working on that, on that goal. A lot of this has to do with, uh, the topic of social emotional health and that's a jo- goal that, um, Jamie has, so it's not replicated here. But, um, there is a new state grant, um, that allows us to look at, uh, social emotional health. And, and we have submitted, uh, for the grant. We haven't heard yet, but if we get this grant, then we would be able to create a team, uh, in each of the schools, in each of the six schools that has a wide representation, the nurse, administrator, teacher, different, uh, adjustment counselor, different specialists that will come together and work on a plan particularly for that building. So we're hopeful of getting that. So it's related to the social emotional, but a, but a different goal that Jamie will have. And finally, we've talked a lot about facilities planning, uh, district wide, um, town, townwide, if you will, as well as our school district wide. And we need to do another ten-year master plan. We're about a year late in getting started on that. And part of that is, is, is that, um, the town has a lot of facilities needs and trying to coordinate whose turn it is to get what kind of project going is, is a challenge. And some of the, the issues that exist townwide are not things, our parts are not things that we can approach unilaterally. And some of that is related to the depot that we went to tour the other day. There are some moving pieces. There's a, uh, a possibility that, uh, the, a needed fire station would be, uh, placed at the depot and that creates a domino effect of, of needs that we have, and some of which you saw, uh, the other day. The other thing is that we have a number of developments that have been proposed. One approved, the Avalon two, and one very much on the, uh, on the front burner. That's the project Bear Broad.
Broadstone.
Broadstone Bear Coat. But anyway, it's, uh, at, uh, two thirty Beale Street across from the Stop and Shop. And so that's kind of on the fast track, hasn't been approved yet by zoning board, but it is on the fast track. And so both of those projects are adding to our population. We don't know fully. We have estimates from the developer of what those numbers would be. But the point is, it's hard to start with an enrollment projection, a formal one, which we like to do when we start a, a master plan, but also which MSBA would we require that we do if we get funding for any, any work that we do. So it's hard to do that when you have this moving kind of, uh, population. So, uh, once we know what's going to happen with the Beale Street, um, project, then we'll be in much better su- uh, place to say, okay, um, the, the major motivator of the town's interest in development has been to meet that forty B criteria and, uh, and number. And so if this Beale Street project goes through, we'll be there. So that becomes now a very good time to embark on enrollment study. And, you know, it may seem that you just ha- go into the, the, uh, Google, um, demographers and find somebody who'll do a, uh, projection study for you and, uh, budget and amount of money and just do it. However, they need lots and lots of data, um, from all kinds of prior, uh, sources. So there's a lot to do to get ready for that we can do without money. And until we can get the money to do a formal projection. So there are a lot of things that we can be doing. Similar scenario about, uh, looking cl- more closely at foster school prior to getting money to design any sort of a project. So I think that's an important thing for us to work on, um, this year. So, so those are the targets. As I said, there are probably ten others that, you know, I, I really could spend time on, but there is not the time to spend. So these are important ones and I think consistent with the discussions we had particularly at planning and, um, and also with, with our mission.
Does anybody have questions?
Are these voted on by the school committee and how long do we have to make revisions?
Well, I think that we should come to consensus and we don't have to do that at this meeting, but I need to, you know, I'm going to work on these things anyway, obviously. But, um, so if you need some more time to look at, that's fine. But ultimately, I'd like to know that it's consensus because, um, we are supposed to have agreement over the goals.
I, um, do have some, um, concerns about what's been stated in the special populations.
Okay.
And I don't know if this is something that we can talk at our subcommittee meeting or if this is something we want to speak about now. Our next meeting is November thirtieth, so I guess my concern is, is that, um, there's a group here, NMR, that's been mentioned by name. And it, um, and I know we have a couple of representatives from that group here, but, um, and I have no disrespect, but I think we need to maybe reconsider what kind of role NMR is going to play. They're still getting, they're still forming, they're still structuring, they're still finding out exactly what their role is and everything. So I think right now, as a school committee member, we need to concentrate on our work with CPAC. And I'm happy to recognize any parents group that might start up in this town. I just don't know if we should be naming one specific one by name in your goals.
Well, my goal is a parent support group, uh, if, if we name it or if it's a new group or whatever. It's really reaching out to parents that, you know, I'm not aware of many of the concerns that had been expressed, some of them, yes, but not all of them. So it really is, my goal here is, number one, to make sure that people have roots and that they use roots to let me know about things. So I'm comfortable with not mentioning any particular group.
What is N, NMR? What does it stand for?
It's, uh, it, No More Ryan. No More Ryan's.
Okay.
I'm, I'm comfortable with whatever.
Yeah, you could just say with parents support groups.
Well, look, why don't we do this instead of trying to, uh, uh, do it on the spot here, know that I'm interested in that general topic, okay? And that we can come back and.
Sure.
Come to, um, agreement on what the wording is. And with CPAC probably is the best way to do it. But certainly, um, that's an important topic for me. The, the different ac- action steps can be different, um.
Yeah.
Okay, I think you bring up, I, I think it's a good point of identifying one particular. I also think it's a good idea that your November thirtieth meeting, if you can get
Get some feedback too.
Some more feedback to make sure that the goal is going to.
We're addressing all, exactly.
And then we can confirm at our December fifth meeting because you'll have, you can then follow up with Dr. Gallo and then we can.
And we just received this today, so this will be good for us to go over here.
Yeah. Makes a lot of sense.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Yep, that's fine. Because then we can focus on pri- prioritizing what we want to focus on.
Mm-hmm.
Great. Anyone else? So if you read it again or think of something, then we'll regroup December fifth to have confirmation.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Seven point four, to receive the implementation timeline for the two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty-one strategic plan. And so we, we.
Yeah, we spent, you know, um, a year, uh, developing the strategic plan. All started, uh, a year ago, um, this fall with the council of councils meeting at the high school where we started looking at the strengths and areas of concern and that morphed into, uh, the draft of the strategic plan, which you got at the end of the summer. And all the school councils got it as well. And we got relatively little feedback on the draft. A couple of things came from one of the student councils that were more grammar. We shared it again with our leadership team at their first meeting this fall and finalized that. But it's a five-year plan and so we had to then look at all of the different indicators, strategies, we call them, and identify how each one of them would be approached and how over the five years they would be approached. So Jamie has led that effort and we worked on that over two leadership team meetings. And so this is, uh, what you might consider the action plan, the implementation plan, the timeline for, uh, each one of those categories. And there's a code at the end here. Well, Jamie, you can tell us what the letters mean because I can't get the code on the screen.
Okay, so it's, um, the three different is R and D, research and development. R O is rollout and then S is sustaining.
I guess the good news is that we're s- S in all of the, oh, not quite. In most of the categories we're at S. However, um.
Future years.
Yeah. However, you can see why when you look at those last ones that all come from, uh, from goal number five. The facilities issues, they're not all going to be resolved in, in a five-year period. We hope that the, we will be well on our way to at least starting out with the master plan and working on ways to, uh, ensure a sustainable source of revenue. That's something we can't do alone. Definitely not, uh, unilateral goal and, uh, operational efficiencies, that's something that we're always trying to find and we look every year, um, throughout the year, particularly at budget time. So it's, it's not surprising that that whole category of goals is not a unilateral one, but maybe we'll be surprised and we'll be successful on some of them in less than the five-year time. So we want to put both the strategic plan and this timeline on the, um, website. And, and actually I talked to Karen on, uh, Friday about, uh, doing that, but where is it, do you think a document like this best, would best be? Should it be on the school committee page? Where, where do you think we should put this on the website?
Can you put it on the district via Janice?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
All right, that's, that's good. We'll do that.
And you, you could have like a message for.
Yeah, kind of an explanation.
A little period of time of, like a link and then that it lives on the district page and the school committee.
Right, yeah, that's a good idea because, um, there's a long, long history for this. It's been a year and coming.
I, I liked the calendar and, and then the act, the R and D, the rollout, the sustaining. I, I found that very helpful of understanding how is it, how are you going to do all of this?
Right.
Um, so I like that.
I was very jealous. Some of you know, I was in New York a couple of weeks ago on an accreditation tour, feeling new international school, just an amazing school with amazing resources. And they have a whole, one school, a whole R and D department. Wouldn't that be a luxury? Oh, my goodness.
Okay. Um, seven point five.
Not a public school, by the way.
Uh, to receive notification of the appointment of para educator, new Meiko bus monitor. And soon we're going to have a central office initiative.
Well, we have now offered the job to the fourth person.
Oh, my gosh.
So the first two from the first round of, uh, postings, um, we offered the job to one, didn't accept it, offered to the second, didn't accept it. We reposted and went out and this time included the salary range right there in the ad because, you know, that's possibly an issue you don't want to find out at the very end. So we had interviewed two wonderful candidates for that and said, you know, we could live with either of them, but this job has been vacant, essentially vacant for, um, a year. So, um, we interviewed the two, we offered it to one, she committed that she took it. At the interview, we talked about this, the salary range, are you comfortable with that? Yes. Well, long story short. Well, long story short, on Friday, John said, well, I hate to tell you this again, but that person was going to start on Monday. So now we've contacted the second person and we believe that the second person is going to start on the twelfth. But all of us here are saying, I'll believe it when I see a body sitting in that seat. It's the receptionist's seat. Yeah, so, so anyway, um.
Well, everyone has been very flexible and very enthusiastic when they have to sit in that hot seat. So we thank them for that.
And we have a, we have a super sub who, Vicki, who was a former employee who retired. And I can't tell you how many times I've asked Vicki to come back and sit in some seat, but she is invaluable, uh, to us and we're very appreciative of her, uh, sticking with it, of course.
Okay. Um, other items, not reasonably known, forty-eight hours, anything? Okay. Um, uh, just, I, I'll add one thing in the forty-eight hours. As follow-up to Saturday and what was up, coming up with the fire station, this is fire station committee's meeting tomorrow. And I did contact Greg McKeown, the chair, to just check in if someone should be there, um, to hear some developments. And he assured me that it's, they're not going that far yet. They're still working out some other details. But, um, they will be assigning a representative from their committee to liaise with the schools, be Nancy McDonald, and, um, I will work with John and Don and long-range planning or the committee will figure out how we liaise back to them and how we keep communications open. But I think my gentle reminder was, gave the message after our big tour on Saturday. So just wanted to report that back to all of you.
I think a similar reminder is that, remember, we want to watch carefully the, uh, the Beale Street project because we do have some concerns about the proposed bus stop there. So I did send a letter, um, to, uh, the zoning board. They were given the letter at their last meeting and I was assured that they would keep us posted. It's going to be many meetings to go, yet when we should, uh, appear, uh, to have that discussion. We don't, we don't want to lose track of that.
Okay. Um, so subcommittee and project reports.
Uh, the policy subcommittee, and I apologize, I didn't bring my datebook, um, but I know we're meeting in the first two weeks of December at some point. And we have been, the second, December second, at eleven. We have been putting off, finishing up, uh, policy manual section six because we've taken time out to work on things like the volunteer statement. But it is looking hopeful that we should be able to finish up with section six quite possibly at this next meeting. And then we'd be, um, bringing all those revisions finally to, um, the full committee for a first reading, hopefully, maybe in December.
Uh, committee outreach has, well, our next meeting's, uh, the twenty-ninth, November twenty-ninth at eleven. And we've been going to the PTO meetings and I've gone to one. It was a really fun experience, I gotta say, just to give an update on what's going on in the school committee, school district world, and also to get some feedback from, um, the people there. So I don't know if either Kay or Carol.
Oh, which reminds me, um, because I attended that as well. Is there an update on the committee search?
The.
That was mentioned in the last meeting.
Yeah, and everybody's done it.
Okay, sorry.
I have a.
So that's what we're doing.
Uh, salary negotiations, meeting on December sixth at one o'clock.
Well, I was remiss last meeting when I told you that these, that the, uh, long-range planning meeting hadn't. In fact, we did meet on October twenty-sixth.
So late.
And we, uh, spent a lot of time discussing the walk-around, which has already transpired.
Yep.
Uh, but we did agree to pursue a request to complete the, uh, the next phase of the HAWK project, the basic service, basic services, phase one. Um, the three members of the special education subcommittee attended the CPAC meeting, which I mentioned. And again, our, our, our next, our posted meeting will be Wednesday, October thirtieth at seven PM. Uh, just a couple of comments or observations. I attended the, uh, to, to expand on Dr. Gallo's comment, I attended the Veterans Day ceremony at Town Hall and the high, the Hingham High School band under the direction of Brian Cincotta was just terrific. They really were. They did five medleys and they were thanked by several of the speakers and they were, they were just terrific. Uh, and lastly, um, I received a, uh, an email today from, uh, S. Simon and Company saying that, uh, that it sent to the, uh, the Pi men and the Pi women. Uh, and it said, it said that the, uh, Pies will be, uh, at headquarters, uh, tomorrow at nine-thirty. And it was signed, uh, your pal, Simple.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay. Um, John, on the principal's search, um, I have received a request from three people. Um, I haven't done anything yet because I was dealing with another meeting last Monday, which then fell into the rest of the week. Um, so, um, I will decide something next week. So if anybody else, um, who hadn't put their name in, they want to let me know, but I'll work with Jamie to get that done next week. So I, I apologize for my delay on that. Um, so unless anyone else says anything else.
John.
Just one more thing. I'm sorry, Dr. Ed, but I, I would like to add that at the last meeting, we also set the date of December seventh to have a, a meeting where we're going to discuss the asset inventory that was done for the town and also go over, um, school maintenance operations. So it'll be a single agenda item to talk about the asset inventory and to, um, talk about school maintenance and, and how we perform maintenance and answer questions to, um, any audience that, uh, would like to ask questions about what we do for maintenance and how's the asset inventory put together.
So is long-range planning hosting that?
Long-range planning is hosting that, yeah. That's on December seventh. I think we said seven, I don't know if we said seven. I think we said seven o'clock.
And there is a school committee meeting the previous Monday.
And, um, so that will be, you know, that will be, uh, Capitol is, uh, save the date has been sent out to Capitol to AdCom. And, um, you know, we'd like to have anybody that's interested in school facilities come to that meeting so everybody can see the work that's been done, the work that will continue and also to address their questions relative to school maintenance.
That's great. So, um, I will not be able to be there that night. I have another commitment, but we will structure the agenda so that depending on how many special committee members attend or we'll talk about how we, whether we call that as a full school committee meeting or how we communicate that with the open.
Maybe it's, uh, long-range planning, joint school committee.
Yeah, 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 yeah. But long-range planning should chair it. Um, but I know advisory's invited, the Capitol Outlay, Selectmen, yeah.
I had spoken to them previously and said, well, this is what we'll do, you know, we'll, we'll hold a meeting. And long-range planning, I think is the right committee to hold that because all's, uh, you know, I mean, it'll be, it'll be good because we can spend a couple of hours and we can totally address, you know, facilities and spend plenty of time with questions without having to move on to other agenda items.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. Good for you guys to propose a single topic.
So we will post it as a joint meeting, the way we did Saturday, but also send that posting to Capitol Outlay and so they can, they can post their own.
Yeah, and, and we'll, um, yeah, but that's, if they, if they desire, yeah, that'll be fine. Yep.
Okay. I'll make a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Aye.
I know you want to come up, Cap.
Yeah.
Twenty-nine.